All right, I will call tonight's work session to order if you join me in a moment.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal to this world, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well now move on to citizens comments. This is an opportunity for those in the public to address the council for up to three minutes. If you just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Beth Flowers. I'm a resident of Eureka Township. I had this going on about this about thirty minutes ago. I apologize for abruptness. So about seven days ago, on June tenth, I'm sorry, June eighteenth, potential buyers of Applewood Orchard were present at a public hearing in Eureka Township. They paid for this public hearing. It was there, they were there to discuss the future of Applewood Orchard and its place within Eureka Township. They said that they wanted, they intended to carry on the same traditions of the Applewood Orchard, and nothing would be changed. Operating would be the same. Although they were in fact requesting a text amendment change to allow for mechanical rides and farm states amongst a few other things. They mentioned, they never mentioned anything about the right, about having the right to convert to an industrial zone or industrial commercial use, which is on your agenda this evening. So as a resident of Eureka Township and a friendly neighbor, I have some concerns about the two different stories, why this public hearing was held six days ago, and here we are with you guys. It's kind of curious. Thank you.
Okay. Any others? Do you want to comment as well?
And this, I didn't know.
Okay. This is the end of public comments. Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we'll now get into the Applewood Orchard introduction and Tina will do the stuff, I think.
Yes, thank you. Got a presentation. Should I come around the notes? Chris Fuller from Endurance Farms is here. He has requested the opportunity to present their plans for you for the orchard and some potential if, if they were to request in the future, potential annexation. And it's just an idea that the group has. Would we consider some kind of zoning, whether it be through an underlying industrial with an agrotourism use or some other permanent agricultural zoning. But the intent behind these requests, I believe both at the township level as well as at the city level, is that they don't ask for annexation, they remain in the township, or they do ask for annexation and desire to become part of Lakeville's boundaries, is to have the underlying land use in a manner at which they can continue operating as they are today, as well as expanding their business. So I'll hand it over to Chris. He's got a presentation. And then opportunity for any kinds of conversation you want to have.
Great. Tina, thank you for that introduction. And I'm glad to be meeting with you all today here in Lakeville. I believe, have folks seen this presentation yet?
It was in the packet.
So great. So I'll, I'll work through quickly the questions. If you'd like me to focus on any area, please interrupt and let me know. Just some background on Applewood Orchard. Applewood has been a family farm in Apple Orchard since 1995. It's owned by the Prento family who are, who put the property up for sale. And so has to guests from Lakeville, from Eureka Township and from these communities, really for the past 25 years as a wonderful family business. Everything from picking apples outdoors to drinking cider made on site, to food and some lake fair that they've served there along with an activity yard. This is an amazing community asset. And my partners and I, and Endurance Farm partners, are excited about continuing this fine tradition of Apple's community centric education and farming on this wonderful property. And we're currently under a study period. You guys are familiar with the location of the property. It borders Lakeville and is next to or adjacent to the local airport. And now it's an unusual property in so much as not only does it border Cedar, it has no immediate neighbors. So this is a property that stands by itself. And it's been a part of the Eureka community for a long time and a part of the fabric of this community for a long time. So, so who's the Endurance Farm team? I'm one of four in this company. And I'm by far the least impressive. The, the two folks that you guys are going to want to learn more about are Wayne Bishop and Jeff Manley. These are two very experienced farmers, have grown up in this industry and host, and the long history of hosting families and properties that they either run or own. Wayne is a second generation pumpkin farmer in Sacramento, California. He runs a wonderful farm. His children's work there. It's one of those great community assets and it's really inspiration for what Applewood could become one day. Of course, each one of these properties is different and what we love about Applewood is what it is today, a great apple orchard. Billy, my partner, who's been out to visit the property a number of times, has been involved in the meetings with Eureka Township, is someone who would be in charge of this farm day to day. He'd be moving here, being a member of your community to help us take this farm and invest in it and grow it. I'm sure everyone in this room has at some point or another enjoyed what we call agritourism. But this is a data farm, often with multiple generations of your family enjoying apple picking, spending time in nature, learning about how farming works in our local ecosystem, and enjoying homemade food and beverages that are either made at the farm or sourced locally. These are just amazing community places with education at the heart of them. If you ask the Prento family, you know, and growing apples, the thing they love the most about their property. Okay. That was put on pause during COVID, but we'd like to bring back. Agritourism is a concept that is widely understood and discussed in many states. Minnesota has a definition of agritourism that you can see on the slide here. And this is something that encourages small properties and farms to invest in experiences for customers and local community members. That's picking your own apples, that's education and field trips, that's spending days on the farm with activities and getting outside in nature. And of course, Minnesota has a fine tradition of, of apples and apple raising. And that's something that we're obviously very focused on. One thing that you often see in this industry and in thinking about properties like this is coming up with a definition that allows the farm to thrive over time and build a great experience around the natural bounty of the land. So as part of this presentation, you put together a definition of agritourism that builds on the state's definition to try and be transparent about what we think is important to highlight to Lakeville and to Eureka. So that's on this slide. We can come back to it certainly. Our, our plan for Applewood is very straightforward. It's to continue the fine tradition of apples, having community members come and join us at this magnificent property and spend a day on the farm, learning about farming and enjoying the natural bounty of the city and this part of the state. These are all things that the Prento family has done in some small way or another over the past 25 years. And what we would like to do over time and in consultation with our neighbors is continue to add elements of that to make it a full day destination and a destination that people can celebrate. This is designed to be part of the community. It'll be run by someone in the community and it'll employ folks from the community. Folks have asked, you know, what does this mean in a practical sense? Are you planning to have an anti-gravity roller coaster at this property? The answer is no. You have no intention of doing that. And what we want to have is a great picnic experience around apples. We want to have an activity yard for kids and families to enjoy being outside safely together. We want to invest in flowers and pumpkins and a corn maze, things that have historically been done at the property. We want to revitalize that and add more to it. We also want to have great food and beverage that's tied to that experience where people can spend the day, have lunch, stay for the afternoon and be outside for a whole day experience. And of course, that touches on. When you hear things like mechanical, what that does is cover things like a hayride, where a tractor is hooked up to a safe place for people to be brought out into the orchard to pick apples and brought back. You're not, you shouldn't expect to see a whirly twirl machine or, I'm not sure what it would be, but we, we want to keep this a beautiful, natural property that looks and resembles something that we all be proud to spend the day on. One thing we're really excited about and something that Wayne and Jeff are passionate about at the properties they own or have worked on is having a, an education component to this. The property, you know, and having apples has a stream that runs near it and a wetland. These are great opportunities for young students to see three different ecosystems that they experience every day, but might not know a whole lot about. And one great thing about this property is it affords us an opportunity to do that in a very tight area, which is exciting. So obviously that's interactive and something that people can do during the week in a way that get the community engaged with us, more importantly, thinking about farming and where their food comes from. Applewood is one of many agritourism farms within driving distance of Lakeville and Eureka. There are a number of beautiful family run properties, all within 20, 30 minute, 40 minute drive of this location. And these are thriving businesses that, you know, create a great experience for the local communities. And we want Applewood to continue doing that here. And so if you can think back to the original photo of the site, this is what we have in mind. We want to keep the vast majority, the 20 acres largely apples, about 20 acres of apples today. Obviously, apple trees, depending on their planting and variety, need to be refreshed occasionally. I'm not sure if any farmers are in the, are in the group, but that's certainly the case. And we want to, you know, expand the campus today onto land that's currently part of the property for flower picking, pumpkins, and corn maze. An activity yard is just a way to describe a, a great playground for kids. You can see today, F and B and retail, there's an existing barn that is already an F and B and retail site. It's where cider is produced, where people visit faster to pick up apples and the fresh produce that they sell on site. And obviously, we want to be thoughtful about parking.
Hey, wait a minute.
Please do.
So is it an expansion parking? Because I know that it can be a challenge there on the Saturday of the fall.
And then what, what we're thinking is right now, parking, the only parking that exists today is this first area. So we propose to add, create more parking spaces for folks. And we've also had some plumbant conversations with our neighbor here, which is just a farm who seems open minded about providing overflow parking if that's ever needed. But we want to be very thoughtful about traffic.
Yeah. And your neighbor the north doesn't love that that road is a gravel road. So you see, you haven't talked to the airport yet.
We, we've talked to the airport. I think there, we've had, it's not like we've had serious discussions, but we've said, this is what we are and this is what we're thinking about. And I thought that was interesting. I loved having neighbors with a farm. You know, one of the questions is, how can we make sure that the infrastructure around the property around Cedar can support a business? I think that's a, it's, having read the, both the Lakeville long-term plan and the Eureka long-term plan, I think that's something everyone's thinking about. Certainly, we would want to be proactive in that too. Obviously, this is a little bit of talking my own game. I think there are lots of reasons to support Applewood. And we can talk about any one of these categories. But I think one of the most important things in thinking about this property is having the right zoning for it, to make sure that as a group, if we invest the time and energy to enhance the agritourism operations at this property, we have the confidence to do that. Today, it's not just agriculture. There's, there's been retail at this property for a long time. Neither the current owners or the township have any record of that. And so there's this long-term use of this property that's been a flourishing local business for a long time. And engaging with Eureka and engaging with the city, we want to create the right zoning environment so that we can, one, be transparent and play by the rules. And two, invest with confidence so that if we continue to enhance the orchard and add the playground and invest in an educational program, we've, we've done that according to zone and according to the rules of the road, which are important to us. Yeah, this is a, you know, obviously, there's always a traffic consideration when you have a property that's designed to host guests on a seasonal basis. There are no, there are no real, my understanding, I have to be corrected on this, is that there haven't been many traffic issues related to this property. I know it's a dirt road or not a paved road. And then there's this question of precedence. We've seen great farms exist near and around each other. These places are halos. They bring people closer together. They bring the community together. And it's not a zero sum game. One thriving agritourism farm does not, and then another thriving agritourism farm. There are lots of ways for everyone to enjoy these types of properties and feel proud of them. I, I think for us, and I know this is our first meeting, what we'd like to understand is, or eventually get some feedback on, is how the city would think about a property like this and how we think about zoning a property like this. The industrial zoning or right to convert is a long-term question mark. And so when you enter, if we think about an annexation by ordinance, we'd be part of this other annexation process going on with other properties nearby, is something that we naturally ask about. But the most important thing for this property for us is the agritourism piece. We think in decades. That's how farmers think. But I think it'd be appropriate and worthwhile to think about how agriculture can continue on this site with an eventual rise to industrial, should that ever make sense frankly for the city. I'll pause. I didn't get a lot of talk.
Where, can you go back to a map and show me exactly where the city boundaries are? Is it just right at the airport?
Yeah, it's immediately a budding right at the airport.
Up here.
So for the annexation by ordinance, it would have to be a budding property that's already a part of the city. So immediately north and then Cedar is just to the, is the north south, just to the right of that.
Okay. And now is that area the airport to the east? Is that in the township or is that?
That, I believe, this rectangle piece here is still township.
Okay.
Yep. And so the idea would be if they were to request annexation, this is an if, for this use, we would need to consider something in our zoning arrangements that would allow for the use to continue as Chris has described. So that could be done as, you know, we could also zone it as agricultural. We have a rural agricultural zoning district. It doesn't feel quite like the right fit because that current zoning district is really suited for, if you can picture the zoning map in your mind, the areas far west of I-35. The other option is we have the rural and ag overlay that could be added over an industrial zoning. Then the industrial zoning district having an agritourism as a permitted or conditional use based on a definition that would allow then for this use to exist into the long term.
You say industrial overlay. I mean, does that mean you could also build? Okay. Does that mean you could also have like a Manashe built there eventually? Because I don't.
Very, very long term. You know, part of the planning, if you were to annex property in, part of the deal would be planning for the long term. If the farm ever were to go away, and I don't believe that is the intent of these owners, but if the farm were ever to cease operation, then what would that ultimate zone, ultimate zoning best suited for that area if it were annexed into the city? And so that is why using an industrial zoning with the rural ag overlay, I think that's what it's called. I was just pulling up the zoning map. Yeah, rural agricultural overlay. Then that would allow the farm to exist. That definition can be created that would match all of the different types of uses that are being proposed, you know, the orchard itself, the processing of the product, if you will, the apples, and then the creation of all the other activities to run the orchery.
And not to, to piggyback on that slightly, we have no intention of creating an industrial complex on the site. We're farmers. We think about agritourism. If you look at our team, that's what we're focused on. And so I think we're in a study period with the owners who have been very supportive of us exploring this and frankly, making sure that we can continue to do the things that they've done as a family for 25 years. And that, that's sort of the, that, that's the zoning story behind that slide.
So why industrial? I mean, I, I, I'm thinking if we're looking 20, 30, 40 years down the line, I mean, is that, there would need to be, or I would imagine there would be a push away from industrialized if Eureka became an incorporated city. And, you know, they've got us in the core. You know, and I mean, I wouldn't want industrial to be the, the final zoning for, as far as we can see, when we go back to commercial or townhomes or, I mean, I guess, why, why just industrial? Could it be a commercial district with, with a agricultural overlay over that? I know it doesn't make sense because there's no plan for the land on the other side of it. But I guess we don't know what those plans might be 30 years from now.
Yep, it's a good point.
I know I'm agnostic about this more with the city to figure out what zoning overlay you guys are comfortable with. So whether it's commercial or industrial, I think we're open minded.
Okay, I mean. I mean, I don't know what you guys think. I mean, I'm the agritourism thing definition expert. Come with that. We just have to think hard about what the, you know, the underlying.
The other part of me is, what excited me about this project was the preservation of this history of farming in this community with no, I mean, at some point in time, all of our borders will be developed and this opportunity to preserve farmland may not be available in the future. And so I wasn't really excited about an overlay of districts. And honestly, my preference would be an agricultural zoning that allows for this kind of event and tourism venue without the need for looking at a different zoning.
I, I think we are open minded about this. We didn't, the concept of industrial can come from the Endurance Farms. We can't, discussing with your guys, you know, certainly not defenses about the zoning. I would say that, you know, our, our interest is presumably that this experience is a part of the education component. Where these properties, in our experience, start to struggle, it's very hard to attract people to a farm that's surrounded by all commercial stuff because they don't feel like they're an farm anymore. So if you zoom forward 50 years, 30 years, whatever, hypothetical timeline, we could figure out this room. At a certain point, will, will the agritourism flourish if you're surrounded by sand homes or warehouses? I think we've all imagined that being less than ideal for someone running an agritourism business. So that, that's really the nature of our discussion. So, you know. And we, we'd love for this to remain in Applewood. We think in 50 to 100 years, this is not a, we're going to, you're out here from us in three years, it depends on those plans. The amount of time, energy and resources were put into this property in the orchard to be farming and new equipment.
Well, in that regard, to me, it doesn't make sense to forecast what zoning you might need in that period of time. It would be an agritourism farm now, and if we need to revisit that in 50 years, when another council's at the helm, be the time to reevaluate changing that, that zoning, in my opinion, but.
Tina, how does that first option, the agricultural zoning with the right to convert to industrial zoning, how is that done? Is that just, is it some kind, would that be some kind of stipulation or?
You know, it's, the overlay, the rural overlay works because if it's, if they were to request annexation, they have the right to do that. You know, if they become the landowners, they could request that annexation. And so we have to ensure we have something that allows the use, some zoning district that allows the use. So having the industrial with that rural overlay would allow for that use. That rural overlay is used in areas that aren't being served with municipal services, so sewer and water. This property, even if it were annexed, is not going to be served with sewer and water for some time. And we've been very clear with the prospective owners that you could request annexation, but that doesn't mean you're going to be at services. They're quite a ways away. And we have not historically provided that for these properties. If an annexation happens, they're the ones hitting the pipe and watering it. So that rural overlay allows it to exist as that, as a rural function, thinking way longer term, what is the ultimate end of land use if it were to convert? The other areas around that should be considered, to your point, council member Lee. So that was our first take at it. But again, this is very preliminary. We don't even know if they're going to actually ask for annexation. I was aware of the application and the process they've been going through with the township. And I think the owners are being smart and methodical to make sure if they buy this property, that they have the uses, that they can exist and expand and maintain this farm, whether they stay under the township or they come into the city. That is their ultimate goal. And they're being smart by doing that, both at the township. I think it was very respectful that they do it at the township as well as with the city.
So every 10 years, we do a top plan update. That's what it would come into play too. Every 10 years, when you, when everybody's looking at the pie as a whole. So it doesn't have to weigh 50. It's whenever it starts to peak.
We can get creative. This council's been very receptive in the past. When he's asked to, to maintain a business or to welcome a new business, this council has been very generous and kind of thinking outside the box. And so that was the message that I gave to these four gentlemen, that I believe that this is something that the city, even with it remaining in the township, values in seeing a new ownership group operate it, expand it, run it. I think that is a benefit not only to the city, but also the township. So I was, you know, I mean, before talking to you guys, explained to them that we will figure something out. Because I believe that if they were to request that, that this group would support that. Hopefully, it's be better. It doesn't sound like.
I've been on there for a long time.
Oh, great. Yeah, it's a, it's a wonderful property. I think, you know, Kathy, the owner, is, is retiring. And so one reason why our group resonated with her is our plan to keep this a plant.
What are the options under egg preserve?
Um, yeah, it, I don't know if it's up my head. I'll have to get back to you on that one.
Yeah, well, I guess added to the conversation of creativity, because I just, it seems to be one of the more consistent uses for the moment.
Yep.
And I just hesitate to, to change the zoning when it, there's nothing surrounding it that would indicate where we're headed.
Yeah. And in a sense, it would be, you know, maybe don't look at it, if they were to request annexation, the only reason why we would be having this conversation in the, maybe not to distant future, is if they go through the process of requesting annexation. Because I had a sense, it's, it's not really being zoned. It's being rezoned. It's being zoned for Lakeville.
Right.
That makes sense? Because right now, I'm not even sure what it is under the township.
It's zoned as agricultural.
Okay.
But really, you as the owner, what you're looking for is a confirmation from Lakeville that if you were to annex, that we would work with you to. a confirmation from Lakeville that if you were to annex, that we would work with you to create the zoning that be appropriate to preserve the agricultural use that you have now.
And continue to enhance the property. The agricultural zone.
I think that's what council's kind of, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're okay with that.
Yep.
I don't think you're gonna get them to give you or to tell you what the zoning is gonna be here, what you're gonna allow. And I think what you're getting from council is we're interested in, and if you were to annex, we'll work with you to figure out the zoning.
We're on the range.
That's very well received, this is, this was the the nature of the meeting, so it's helpful to you to do that.
And just to answer your question, Councilmember Lee, farms, agricultural nurseries, wholesale nursery, greenhouses, tree farms, that's all a permitted use under egg preserve. Might need to tweak that a little bit because they do have some retail component. And I think that's one of the other things, Mr. Fuller, tried to, you know, explain that we want all the different uses that are existing out there to all be, whether it's a permitted or a conditional use, to be allowed by rights. So they're not ending up purchasing something and then we knock on their door and say, oh, by the way, you can't operate it that way. They want that introduced into the zoning, so using that definition in the zoning district could work. And then we could consider future rezoning if necessary in the future.
Good. No questions?
Tina, does the overall size of the property allow the property to directly annex? Or is that?
Pardon?
Is the overall acreage allowed the property to directly annex? How was that, the conversation that was had last week was to the properties surrounding or to the Yurka Township?
It was the Yurka Township and there was public comment as well.
That's true. And the purpose of that is to see if they would allow future uses, same, basically the same conversation.
We're having the same, effectively. Um, the 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 question for the township was as the future, as the future buyers, potential future buyers. We have no record of being able to do the retail, host people, do field trips. This is zoned as ag, agritourism isn't something that's in the township. Zoning apparatus. Here, here's who we are here on plans, how would you handle this, or how would you think about this? And that that was the.
Even though that's the practice.
Yeah, so I I think um, I don't want to speak. I was observing, I was watching the video. Um, uh, I I think there were I think the township uh is very supportive of Applewood. I think they are more focused on individually permissioning different things within the agritourism definition. And I think my understanding coming out of the meeting was they're willing to consider an IUP for the property, but on the timeline that would make it very challenging for us to offer any level of service to get purchasing.
Thanks for coming. Give us a hello, good luck.
Thank you very much. It's really awesome.
Thanks, Tina. Uh, okay, we'll now move on to the pedestrian crossing policy and Mr. John, you're gonna see this up.
Great.
Better copies. Sorry, like Applewood didn't finish that day.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to share with you a project that we've been working on uh for over a year. Uh, and I'll provide you with a little bit of background on this. Uh, it's titled Pedestrian Safety Assessment Study. Uh, it goes back to 2020 and 2021, when uh when the council first adopted a bicyclist and pedestrian crossing study. Uh, if you'll remember, one of the things that we highlighted at that time was the emphasis on education um and evaluation encouragement and kind of that continually um approach to look for a data-driven process to support us in this. Uh, one of the high scores that we consistently get throughout our surveys is is residents and businesses and their passion for our trails, our parks, connectivity. Uh, that was affirmed in the Park Bond Referendum. And so this is kind of a continuation of that process is how can we work towards building a safe transportation network for all? So the purpose of this was to look at two things. One is to take in 21 and 2022, the city of Lakeville amongst other Dakota County cities partnered to look at a county-wide assessment, so it was looked at from the angle of a county highway approach, but understanding that many of the elements, and the goal, Ben, honestly, was to be able to use some of those elements in individual cities as well. So we looked at issues, plans for pedestrians, strategies. Our goal was to develop that data-driven process that was transparent, fair and equitable and easy to understand. Uh, you'll still, you'll hear tonight that there's not a materialistic difference between the policy adopted in 20 and the one that's being proposed to tonight, but it's more thorough, it's more comprehensive, it's more user-friendly and it's really sequential and following all the different options available to us. So one of the elements that we're really excited about is the public engagement. Uh, we had kind of this framework from the county, but we really wanted to apply it specifically to the city of Lakeville. So we took a number of different options and opportunities to try to get specific feedback from all. So we did social media posts, we did flyers as well. Uh, we had a couple of events here that I'm gonna highlight for you. Uh, one is the Earth Day event uh in April of 2023. We had comments from over 100 folks and we had 70 unique comments, which means there's 70 different locations or requests throughout the city that we're talking about there. We had another event uh with Panabro, the Lakeville Fire Department, Waffle Breakfast in July. Uh, we had really good uh feedback from that event. We had over 200 people come speak specifically to us at that, and we had over 170 unique comments on that. So combined, you can see we're getting a lot of locations and interest from folks. Uh, we had a project website where we had comments from over 300 people and 500 unique comments, our locations. Uh, I also want to highlight that our youth advisory committee, we met with them on a Sunday night and got really good feedback from them. They completed a survey for us. Uh, we also had email. And so we really felt like we had a a good grasp uh from the community on where we were taking this kind of study and this approach. And this is just kind of a snapshot of all of the different areas where we received those unique comments. So the next step is we wanted to prioritize uh crossing locations. And we took it through three different lenses. We looked at it as part of transportation. We looked at it, so how you get there, you're biking, walking, rolling. We looked at destinations, parks, schools, commercial nodes, other trails. We also looked at inequity lens as well, too. And then we took those three different factors to create kind of a scoring system. And just to give you a little bit of perspective, um, let's see if I can show how this looks or not. What this kind of looked like. You'll see all the feedback that we got citywide. And that's, for example, on transportation, obviously, the different colors reflect the different comments, number of comments, similarity in that. Uh, you can see some of the scores here from inequity, if you change colors for us. And then also, uh, as far as destination standpoint, oops, sorry. So I will share with you, having attended a number of meetings for transportation projects, I was super excited to see just uh the sheer numbers of folks who were involved in this study. It was very encouraging and fun to see it, to know that in-person uh participation. So we had feedback, and so then we went and moved on to the next phase was data collection. And we used cameras and we wanted to make sure that we focused on good weather situations. We wanted to talk about in-school, out-of-school, weekends. Uh, so you'll see here a little bit of the data collected. We got it um one in the fall of 2023 on a weekend. We had almost 1,500 pedestrian bicyclist trips. We also did some evenings as well, uh where we got another 1,600, and this also included downtown Lakeville as well. We got some good uh feedback there. So we've gotten, we have the background from the county, we got feedback from residents and we've got data collected. So the next thing we wanted to do is formulate kind of this data-driven approach using a number of criteria. Engineers love all those kind of checkboxes, we have 30 different boxes we can check. Uh, we tried to narrow that down to assist us. But I wanted to provide a couple of examples on how this was applied. So this is 170th Street, 175th Street here in Newland Path. And you'll see the existing crossing there uh on the right side of that. And some of the challenges we had there is the left-turning movements for folks going westbound um to westbound 175th to go southbound, so you had a lot of number of traffic conflicts. Uh, you had the wide with the pavement as well. So one of the things that we looked at here was introducing what we call a pedestrian refuge. And what that basically does is that helps pedestrians limit their focus, their lens to one direction of traffic at a time, provides them a safe refuge outside of the moving traffic. And then again, they only need a certain amount of time to pass before in that safe refuge versus crossing like a 50 or 60 foot wide pavement. We also have, and I want to highlight too, that this is also a benefit of the study is we're able to implement some of these in our current projects. So we wanted to be proactive in our approach to assisting uh in improving our system. So this will be done as part of 2403. Another example is Ipana 190th Street. I I apologize, it might be difficult to see, but uh we're adding and we're increasing the length of the medians on Ipana. Again, creating that reduced pavement crossing width for folks, creating a safe refuge. And then also, when you're traveling along Ipana and crossing 190th Street, you reduce the pavement width here, where with a curb extension or a bump out, if you will. And so these are kind of the examples, these are flashy, um, but they're they're educated, they're improvements to try to create that safe, accessible experience for folks. Couple other things we looked at was downtown, they can be pedestrian refuges, they can be, it could be something as simple as signage and uh pavement marking to assist there. Then another item, I'm sorry. And then another item we looked at here was 172nd Street in Highview. This is an example of where we have a higher speed roadway. You know, in the past, the answer was always, you know, no. And we're trying to find a way, if we know that there's trail crossings from Steve Michon Park, how can create, you know, that user experience and improve safety? So this is a concept, this hasn't been implemented yet, but this is a concept of how we're looking at different intersections differently and seeing what we can add to each one.
So when it's a high-speed um road, I'm seeing, maybe we haven't, where they have those flashing lights ahead of letting the driver know that somebody's pushed a button across.
Correct.
And that's what you would do here.
That's definitely a possibility, those are called random rapid flashing beacons. We have some on Ipana by Century, we have um a couple other ones in town, but yes, that's an option as well. They also, you could also take the next step where they call them hawk systems or pedestrian hybrid beacons, similar to what's on County Road 11 in Burnsville, where it's it's almost like a traffic signal, if you will, but it's just for pedestrians. Um, but yes, absolutely, that would be an option as well. So out of this, about an 18-month study, uh we produced the final report and I wanted to just highlight two elements of it. And again, the intent was for staff to use as guide, but also for residents and elected officials. When they get questions, this is kind of the path that we follow, and it's it's a lot easier to follow um than just just charts. So this is a flow chart that uh in theory, we we can complete our 30 checkboxes in relatively short order, and then kind of follow this path as well to provide some guidance on what systems are available to us. And then we also have this um Councilmember book, what you're kind of alluding to is, and I apologize for the small font, but those are the random method flashing beacons that are options. And you'll see that uh as you go from the upper left to the lower right, those yellows, those are kind of the, where you would need something in addition to, or like a pedestrian activated uh signal. And and so in your packets tonight was an updated policy. Um, uh, Senator Miller did ask me to kind of highlight the differences. And and as he and I had discussed, this isn't a a significant change, it's really additional information, enhancing what we have um and distributing it in a way that that's easier to understand and relate to folks. So it's it's 24 pages, there's also, I would say, quite a bit of education in as well. And so it's supposed to enhance kind of the user information, you'll see all of this in the current policy. And now we provide guidance, there's background, there's pictures for folks to see. And uh it's it's really in, and and effort to simplify it, if you will. So in 24 pages.
State statute.
That's right.
Um, one question I had was, how do we interact with other partners, like the school district, for instance? 194, 2 or 6, they're planning expansion, and maybe we don't have a ton of traffic, pedestrian traffic there yet. So how do we know? And then I guess the other is you know, the the one I keep, I get asked about all the time is Chikar in Lakeville South, just specifically if you had any update on that.
No update on that particular one. Uh, we didn't talk to all the school districts, one of them, uh, the example was the one on on 185th Street. We're working with them, uh, I'm putting some signs up, uh, not establishing a school speed zone per se, but just introducing folks, say, hey, if you're driving along this corridor, kids could be present. Uh, so we would work with them, there are some like 183rd and Ipana Avenue is one we get a lot of questions on too. Um, it's, 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 the schools don't uh call them, it's not a physical school route. So it's really at, they'll they'll offer their input, but they're not a participant, other than they'll certainly share opinions, share statistics, share communications with family. So we would partner with them from the standpoint, this is something that we want to do, how can you help us to facilitate and communicate that? And so we work with them, they're familiar with this, and we continue to work if, as we identify these opportunities. Uh, it's strategic in in construction of schools, for sure, with the elementary school, it's with our road reconstruction projects, we can partner and implement things as well. Um, there's one example in District 196 where it's a simple little bump out that we can potentially propose to. So uh, we're going to share this document, uh, subject to council's consideration, and then work with them and find those opportunities to make those adjustments.
Council question, your comments? So how does this, I'm thinking of our I-35 group in terms of how certain projects are prioritized. So how then does this translate to a list of which projects are done first or next?
Yeah, and that's a great question. Uh, our current goal is to phase them in where there's opportunities with street reconstruction projects. Uh, you know, so when we're eliminating curb or we're adding curb or we're reducing payment width. So 175th and Ipana both were in the program this year. Uh, 175th up by Cherry View is uh coming up soon, 12 Fifth Street has some opportunities. So from that standpoint, we would address it from a CIP program. If there are certain areas of specific interest or feedback, we could just do that as a standalone project. We could also do it as part of miscellaneous. So I think there would be some discretion from the council, you know, staff would offer some recommendations. We're getting a lot of, like you said, I'm getting a lot of feedback at this intersection. We would do an analysis, yep, this would meet, you know, opportunities for A, B and C. Is it budgeted? You know, we could also look at, you know, a standalone budget amount to address these as they come along. So there's a lot of options. We haven't gotten that far into the discussion, but wanted to at least present this initially to you. So there's a lot of options. We haven't gotten that far into the discussion, but wanted to at least present this initially to you. We could expand upon that when we discuss the CIP, the council, so choose.
As of the projects that were analyzed, is that on the DAS match?
The one that we showed you in this presentation? Yeah. Those all fell, we, we prioritized within the top nine or 12 areas. And the two that fell in there this year were within those top nine.
And, and the details that matched this flow chart are in there. So it matches the threshold and.
They felt they, we don't, we didn't fill out the chart. It's not in there, but it was applied to that to establish those top nine. Correct. So the actual charts aren't in there.
Okay.
But we would fill them out with subsequent ones and then save them if there was questions as to how they fit into it.
Well, anytime I've had a question from a resident of has this intersection been evaluated, can it be evaluated? You're, you're always been very good at that. I didn't know if this was a resource that could also self-manage it. Anyone could walk in, look into it to see, this is how it was evaluated. This is when it was last evaluated.
Sure. The intent would be to apply that engineering judgment and discretion over it. So we would fill that out, but as far as having them available for folks to see, I don't see an issue with that. I would say there'd be some explanation as to why we got to that, obviously. But yeah, I mean, we would say then because conditions could change and it would be a good resource for us to say, you know, here it was seven years ago. What changed? What conditions changed? It could be development, schools, it could be a number of things, road realignments.
Well, that's one of the number one concerns, I think, probably in community. It's, it's helpful to be able to talk about the proactive steps that are being done. And of course, there will always still be concerns that to be addressed, but knowing it's not just. I, I never thought this, but I think sometimes if you're not in the weeds on this kind of work, you think nothing is being looked at or done. But I do appreciate all of that too. So, thank you. No questions? Thank you.
And we'll, we'll bring this to us subsequent. Yes, sir.
Very good.
Okay. Just so everyone knows, the streetlight policies, we're pulling that off the agenda. So we'll go into the local affordable housing aid discussion. And Tina, I think we'll pick up on some guests from, Tony CDA here with us.
Yeah.
Want to come to the table?
Tony and Lisa may give to the table. We wanted to circle back, talked several months ago about Laha funds or the
Don't tell me what time.
Affordable housing aids. We talked about that, what our distributions would be here in Lakeville. And then since that time, Dakota County has been working with communities to identify three specific categories that they could aid communities in distributing those funds. First programs that we are currently funded through CDVG and then two additional programs. And so they wanted the opportunity to be able to talk through that in a presentation. So I will hand it over to Tony and Lisa. You can advance.
Thanks. So Tony Sherpler, Executive Director of Dakota County CDA. Thank you for having us and nice to see you all again. See my old colleague Barry Pick over there making sure I count the money right. So just a quick overview. There are significant financial resources being pushed into policy to help on the housing continuum. So we all know that we've got homeless issues in some parts of the seven county metro. We got affordability issues, other needs, service needs with the folks who need, who struggle to keep their housing because they need some services. And so with those resources flowing through, I think what we're doing and our board has asked us is to be available to help navigate and get more eyes on the problems. And make sure that we're right-handed, left-handed, know what they're doing and that we're hitting the targets that our communities collectively and individuals want us to serve. So with these dollars moving through, the CDA as a public entity does not receive any of these dollars. These dollars are going to cities and seven counties as a metro. But the CDA has a history and experience in administering dollars for affordable housing. So we have produced 30 years of life to make sure that we're hitting the targets, the policymakers of outcomes. And so typically in affordable housing, what that means is when we talk about affordable housing, we're not talking about market cheap necessarily. What we're talking about is income qualified and rent controlled, virtue of the financial tools. So we purchase a public purpose outcome with those financial tools. That's generally on the financing side, but there's a whole continuum of that assistance, people who need that assistance. Very efficient way to get people housed. It's voucher, if you will. Give somebody the financial capacity, once you underwrite their need in order to purchase in the private market. That's the most efficient tool. That's permanent to emergency to based on other problems that folks are suffering at the time. The then it moves all the way to shelter, permanent housing, so affordable permanent housing, which the CDA develops directly. Senior housing in Dakota County and our workforce, family housing. And we help financial, private and nonprofit providers. We finance their affordable housing production as well. So we have a pretty good lens on the demands for affordable housing resources. So our purpose here today is to simply offer, if you choose, would you like us to assist you with those dollars that are coming to you? It's going to be over time, an audit to make sure that we're all using these dollars appropriately. And we're accountable and we can measure the outcomes. And so it's a precious taxpayer resource. We want to make sure that when we're asked, how did we spend those dollars? We can answer that question and tell you how they're targeted. So that's kind of the high level. We manage some programs that qualify. There's a lot of things that qualify. You can use these dollars on a whole lot of different programs. You can administer them yourself, but one of the things that we do is we have, we have that back office, if you will, capacity to administer those on your behalf. And we already do that for several programs. So for example, federal community development block grants. There are entitlement cities out there that could get those dollars directly, but in Dakota County, we've chosen to say, you know what? If the CDA can administer those, we don't need five staff people around the county to administer the same program. We'll centralize it in our show. Then we'll segregate and make sure that we're counting those dollars deployed in your future. So what Lisa and Maggie have been working on, we've been talking to the community development directors in every city. Is why don't we go out and talk to folks and show them programs that we have on the shelf? That you could increase production. So if you wanted to direct dollars here, we can have a one-for-one increase of units done. Public purpose outcome done with these dollars if you so chose. We have to protect ourselves and administrate. So one of the things Lisa will touch on, Maggie is we can't do everybody's. So I would have to go back to my board. If we had more demand to administer these programs, we'd have to stand that up and staff it. And we want to make sure that we were persistent in staffing it. So we don't want to do one year this, one year this. We have to sort of collectively decide, yeah, that's a good program. I like that program. I will finance and we will enter into a partnership to administer that or JPA, whatever the legal instrumentality to do it. My staff will give me a different opinion, but there is an hourglass on these dollars. So three years after you get them, if they're not expended, Minnesota Housing Finance Agency will start coming in and swooping back into the pool. So time does have, start to pass when we do this. We do have some time to stand it up. Obviously my staff is anxious that we're going to do some of these programs. We'd like to go start recruiting staff to administer them to the extent that we can add more. So with that, Lisa, I know bringing into your time. Lisa Alson's going, she's been talking to your CD directors and she's going to talk about the programs that we have off the shelf. You don't have to recreate the wheel that we could help serve your needs if you so chose.
Thanks, Tommy. Again, Lisa Alson, I am the Director of Community and Economic Development at the CDA. And Maggie Dykes is the Assistant Director of the CED Department and she oversees our rehab program. It is really, we think is one of the best. So trying to go put together a presentation and knowing where Tony's going to go with all, with his words. Always fun. So he steals so many of my lines. So I apologize. There's going to be a couple of things we're going to zip through. But as we talked about, Laha is typically the funding sources that we use at the CDA are about 80% AMI or area median income and lower. These are going to go up to 115% homeownership and we have some numbers that I can show you for those. We can use these for a lot of different projects. The legislation, if you have any interest in reading it, it's very, very broad. There's not a lot of detail in there and it provides a lot of excitement, a lot of options, a lot of ideas to generate them. And that's where I am appreciative and thankful for Tony because he always has wonderful, great big ideas. So that I get to be the one to implement them and try to figure out what to do. So we work well together trying to see what can we actually do to help support our cities and our communities. But really the gist of it is you think of housing, it's either preservation, new construction, multifamily, single family, renter, homeownership, all of the main criteria is it has to be within those income areas. You can also do emergency rental assistance, but I will mention this is a quarter cent sales tax. A portion of that quarter cent sales tax is already going to the Met Council to do a lot of rental assistance. Going to go in kind of the form of those section eight vouchers. They're going to just flood more of those into the metro. So a good chunk of this money is already going to go to that. And then in addition, financing that we'll talk a little bit about as well to kind of do some of that gap financing and then financial support. This is one at the end is kind of trying to catch up where there's a lot of nonprofit developers in this housing space who've had a lot of needs to keep their projects up, especially with that supportive housing component. Tony had talked a little bit about. Okay, me and this thing are going to get along. Okay. So I wanted to show Laha for the income limits because the 115% AMI being newer to us is, it's, it's a decent amount. I mean, for a family of four, you're talking about $142,850. So that's where, just to kind of put some mindset instead of just talking about percentages. And then 80% is typically where we are with our federal funds and some of the state funds where a family of four is at 97,800. So lots of ideas can be generated. And as Tony talked about, we've been spending the last year or so just trying to understand the legislation and how broad it is. Trying to talk with attorneys about really can't, what can you do? What should you not do? What should you try to? What are some, instead of being overly creative? And the areas that we've been talking about with your communities and the need that we continue to hear a lot about is in preservation. So of your, of your current housing stock. So that's where our first offer would be to the cities of being able to support you with these Laha dollars of using, bringing those Laha dollars into the CDA and just in what we're calling is enhancing our housing rehab program. So what that is, is we've been doing different types of programs since the eighties. The, right now, the current program is a zero percent interest deferred loan. It's eligible to low and moderate homeowners. With up to $35,000 for a max, a minimum of $15,000. All of them are due. All of them must be repaid. What we do is we just recycle that money back into the program and we look back.
And just to touch on that, so when you have a higher ceiling and your folks are more capacity, we're talking about shallow or financial assistance. So that's basically interest-free money. That's the spread between what you could get in the private market and it revolves, it comes back. So you're not dealing with somebody at 30% AMI where you really won't grant your financial assistance in there because of their capacity to pay it back. So this is, would be considered a shallow incentive for folks at that higher end.
And this program really is a more that preserving the housing stock, but also maintaining the strong neighborhoods and preventing blight. Wanted to just to show kind of what those applicant eligibility is. We do an application process that everyone needs to fill out. You must be a resident of Dakota County. You must be the owner of the house. Your name must be on the title. Those are the current income eligible, the income limits we have going up to that 80% AMI and showing you what those look like. And then we've been able to set, just based on local best practices, we do have a credit score, home equity, assets, et cetera. Because we're underwriting these. We know we're taking a higher risk for the different property, you know, serving, but we still have our own set criteria. So providing just examples of kind of showing what we do with this program is you apply, you get, we do the underwriting to make sure you've got the income eligibility and those items that we also mentioned on the previous slide. And then we have rehab advisors. We have two full-time rehab advisors. We have two on contract and a support staff for the program. And what the rehab advisors do, they come into the home, talk with the homeowner and kind of go through those things on the left. Prioritizing those health and safety, making sure those big things are okay with it. The items in bold are the items that we typically are doing a lot of. Most of our money is going to those. If those things are all in decent, decent shape, we can go to the others, to the other items of signing bathrooms, et cetera.
And as you can imagine, in some parts of the county, the housing stock is older, West End, Paul Hastings. You're going to see more of a demand for this type of service that maybe get more recent housing stocks. So one of the interesting things we'd like to start looking at, where is the lead base paint? Where is the older housing stock that we want to get in? And this really is the cities at the front line on this. You do code enforcement, you see your neighborhoods. And so to the extent that you can, you know, we can encourage people to say, hey, listen, we can fix up your house. We have some favorable financing. Why don't you get in line? We've been hesitant to do that and then we don't have the capacity to serve our customers.
So looking over a five-year period, we wanted to kind of be able to show a profile of who we're helping out there. And so this is countywide averages. This is now just for the city of Lakeville. But average household size is 2.6. The homeowner is 57. The house was built in 53. And then you see that income is 45,000. So that's a lot, it's lower than the 80% AMI that we had shown you before. This was during the time of COVID. So we were doing, the average is 61 loans a year kicking out, what, 1.3 for so many of the dollars. It's a higher now because that COVID year really hurt us and those numbers, but now we're more around the 70, 72 of the market.
Remember their stairs?
Not that yet. We're going to pay for those. We're just waiting for them. I'm wanting to look more at Lakeville, kind of to kind of look over those same five years. In that same five-year period, we served 24 households in Lakeville, about five a year. And we're able to do that because in our partnership with the city, you're putting in, the city council has chosen to put your community development block grant funds into it. So 500, over $500,000 in those five years of your money went into those homes. That will be paid back. That will be recycled and we put it back into the program. We also, the county also in allocating their portion of CDVG, they have chosen to put a significant amount of rehab, CDVG money into rehab as well. And so we've been able to leverage this countywide CDVG money. In addition to leveraging some of the CDA's levy, we also provide money for the rehab program. Then we wanted to just to kind of say, if you took your 300, I think it's, what is it? The estimate is about $385,000 this year, that we should know, I don't know, that's an estimate that's from the end of 2023. We should know on or about July 1st from the Minnesota Department of Revenue, how much you're going to get. And that first tranche of money is going to come July 20th and then the second tranche will come December 26th.
We think that's only half, right? Because it's only.
Correct. It's only like half of a year because I think it started last year. So yeah, so it's, so I think they're starting thinking like bumping up to like more like around 600,000 for an annual amount. And of course, it's all dependent upon sales.
Sure.
But it's a decent amount of money for, for one specific use. So we wanted to just take that total 385 and say, what could you, if you wanted to throw it all into rehab and just really do more in your community. We would think that would be about 12 more households you could do a year in addition to the five that we were already kind of already working with. This program is really popular. We do now actively market this program consistently. It is a lot of word of mouth. It's on the people. We do have it on our website. The cities are great at having it on your own websites and that. But we are not actively out there because we don't have the money and we don't have the staff to really do more. And so we can do what we can do. We've had, we currently have a waitlist. We don't like having a waitlist. We've tried really hard not to have one, but just with certain circumstances. We don't want to also give people hope, false hope, that they're not, that they're going to be out there for a year and a half. Things can change. We all know. So we do have three Lakeville households on that waitlist right now. We're working on, we're working through it. And we think that we can, we'll be able to open it in September and hopefully get more. This is where Tony had mentioned before is in all honesty, I, this, the cities are going to get about three point, if we're believing these numbers from a year ago, about 3.8 million dollars in total for Laha dollars this year. Maggie and I think that we can probably take about conservatively, conservatively about 1.2 to 1.4 million dollars. Maggie and I think that we can probably take about conservatively, conservatively, about one point two to one point four million dollars just for the rehab program. If we can get that amount of commitment from the cities, we feel comfortable hiring a staff person and be able to do even more. Anyway, what were we thinking, we're going to get to about one hundred and fifteen?
So one of my questions about, you know, the commitment is, you know, obviously I know you have to staff up on those things. And for me, on the early side, this stuff makes sense. In a year for now, two years, my continuing here from you guys, the waitlist for senior CDA apartment is huge. And personally, I think that when you think about a site in Lakeville. So what if we decide two years from now, a year from now, we want to build an apartment, but we're going to pull back our commitment, how does that impact?
And that's a great question, and I think one of the phenomena that we're looking at now with these dollars starting to move through the system. There are certain remedies on the housing continuum that can be deployed quicker, so like emergency branch assistance or this program. There are other, there are other expenditures that are going to take three to four years to mature and be available. That is one of the things that I think collaboratively with the county and the CDA and the cities, maybe be more transparent on when you can make those trade-offs and those decisions. One of the things we have to be careful about with the Laha dollars is they don't want us swapping out. They don't want us to take a current effort that we're pursuing on affordable housing and take the Laha dollars and reduce another source of funds, so we have to be very cognizant of that. But in fact, we do almost zero-based budgeting at CDA. And so when I come back to my board and get approval of budget, we are identifying the source at that year. And so if we had a senior housing project that came along, the CDA wanted to pursue, some of these dollars could be capitalized, according to our financial advisors out there, you could convert part of that sales tax revenue stream into debt service for a project. So when we came to that fork in the road, we could come back and say, why don't we start? And the board has already directed me to go out and look for another ten senior housing developments over the next ten years in the county. So start to size the piece of those sales tax revenues. I think we would do that with the county first and allow the cities more flexibility, not the city to pay for that senior housing, but that is always available for you to do if you so chose. But we would have to come back when that was maturing as an opportunity.
And that's one of the options that we also are interested in talking more about, like those, we call it more that gap financing tool.
Just as an example, our senior housing program in Dakota County, thirty developments, five point six million dollars of our annual levy goes to the debt service on that. That program is entirely contained with that five point six and the rents that come in from the seniors. That program has two basic revenue streams to support it, those two, five point six. If you look at the amount of sales tax that's coming, if the county gets twelve million dollars, that's another senior housing program. You could start to create the same common bond mechanism to do that. And I think we would start with one revenue, one allocation from the county before we went to ten different cities, because there's some complexity on that.
And we've been kind of kicking around, you know, and I appreciate you understanding, we'll have to staff up, right? And I don't want to hire someone and then let the role of the year. We've been, Megan and I have been kind of kicking around, maybe having a two-year commitment, just to be able to know that we have some money for a couple of years, see how the program grows, see how much capacity we really can do, see what we can do, and then be able to come talk to the board and talk to the cities about where we're at. The second program that we were interested in, it really meshes well with the rehab program. And it's, maybe it's a one-off, maybe it's a part of it, I don't, we, we know that radon is a real issue in Dakota County specifically. And HUD just came out in the spring and said that we now are required to test for radon. And if the, if the levels are a certain amount, we do need to put in a radon mitigation system. So we've been talking about the idea of being able to have a grant to go associated with this, excuse me, with the, with the folks that we're working with in the rehab program. Those costs about, this is very conservative, I mean, I think it's more around that three thousand. I don't know if anyone's gotten a radon system lately, but I think it's been more in that two to three, yeah, thank you, so sure. So we, we, we're just kind of concerned because this is new to us in trying to go out there and maybe try to be putting in mitigation systems. We haven't put into many of them yet with our current rehab program, but the thought was we could make it a grant, stretch out that thirty-five thousand dollars for the loan. This is not, this, I should mention, this has been approved in concept by our board as a program that we would have, but we don't have anything in policy yet, we haven't, we have not amended our program. There's been interest of, if we are ready to make it a grant, could we hit more of those lower income targets? Is something that our board has been talking about.
Or is it based, I, I do think that health and safety is a, you know, that is one of strategic priorities we're talking about in the county. Obviously, public health is an important issue, so lead base paint, radon, those types of things where we have a client who's got limited capacity. As long as we're in place, should we deploy some dollars to help them do that type of mitigation? So it's, our guys who are out there in the weatherization program are all saying the same thing, boy, we're in there now and we're finding a little bit more than maybe we thought we would, can we close the deal on a couple of things like that? So this was, we had said, let's conservatively plug in what that would look like, but we still have to have conversations about how we look at the need target on that.
And then the last one is getting to Mayor, what you had talked about. The Dakota County CDA, we are really fortunate to have a number of affordable housing finance tools that we are talking to a lot of developers, developers you're talking with, that Tina's talking with, and all throughout the county. Because we have some larger financing tools, but the capital stack has just become more and more complex in needing even more resources to fill those gaps. So this is, we currently fill the gap with federal funds that we get each year, and we also fill them with our own levy program, which is the whole program that the board approves, putting money into that each year, about one point five million dollars to help fill those, those gaps. But this is a great use for, Laha is a great use for gap financing as well. So I just wanted to show a different couple of examples that when we're talking about gap financing. I think a, a big example, one that usually comes to my mind or other people's mind is multifamily, putting in some new construction. So this is wanting to show an example, a more recent examples is what I was trying to put together here for you, but this is Astor House and it's in Eagan. I think this was two hundred some units, two hundred, two hundred and six, I believe. It was an over fifty-five million dollar project that we financed, but it took about two point two million dollars of gap financing with TIF and TIF, excuse me, and then the HOPE program. This is a program where we would not consider if we were to use Laha money, it might be like Tony said, it might be more of a once in a while, when these things come to fruition, rather than putting an allocation amount in each year, it would be more fruition. We don't, we would not need to add any staff, I have, we have staff that do underwriting, this is their job, and so we probably knew our nominal fee is what we would be considering to determine what that nominal fee is.
Can I give you an example? Because I do think TIF is a very politically involved tool. And if you have a project, we have a project in Eagan that turned out to be funded with ARBA, but when we first started looking at it, the city of Eagan had some bond proceeds that we had available for affordable housing. So I think that's what we want to do, to make sure we're communicating with the city, if you have a developer that has a gap, contamination or something, if they're doing affordable housing, that we, we at least present to you a possibility of allocating your dollars onto something like that if you, if you so chose. And so this is again, really about collaborating and making sure, we have a housing development finance team, and we're trying to see over the horizon, we're trying to let policymakers know when a request is coming in. And so just as we see those emerging, make sure that we all are available to help people want.
So a couple of other examples where we are in that space of preservation, new construction, that gap financing is, there was a project that's the cap owns, it's eight apartments for very low-income individuals in South St. Paul, significant interior and exterior rehab. The total development cost of one point one million, I don't call it a gap because we paid for the whole thing, so, but with federal funds and some levy. She's just talking. And then wanting to share, we have been also working on, in the space of affordable homeownership with partnering with Habitat for Humanity. We had a number of units, what was it, a hundred and twenty or so, public housing units that were single-family and duplexes that HUD sold to us for a dollar in twenty twenty. And when those become vacant, we are choosing to, we can sell those, we can sell them on the open market, or we can re, rerun them, but our kind of mix of scale, it doesn't make sense for us to continue to, the county is very large, trying to drive everywhere, and they all have their own mechanical systems, everything, so it's become inefficient for us. So we would like those to be sold, and what we, instead of selling them to investors, we've been selling, the first group the board approved, selling thirty-one of them to Habitat for Humanity for continuing affordable homeownership in Dakota County, long-term affordable homeownership. And this is an example of a property that we sold, that we sold the Habitat in Apple Valley. The, it was just recently, just a couple, oh yeah, June, about a year ago. And so the sale price to the home buyer was three thirty, because you don't want to mess with the market, right? So they sell it to the market value to the homeowner, but that homeowner cannot afford that. So there is a gap, affordability gap, that Habitat buys down that property, so they have a second mortgage on that property of about a hundred and five thousand. And that's made up of state funds, the CDA put funding in there as well to help with that affordability gap. So this is something Laha could also use for that. So those are the three kind of ideas that we're bringing as offering that could be potential ways that the CDA could help utilize those Laha dollars to maximize the use of those in your community. We would complete the estate is starting December of twenty twenty-five. Minnesota Housing is required to do a report, we don't know what that looks like yet, we have a few questions, but curious about what those are. But we would be responsible for completing those on your behalf. Also kind of providing quarterly reports to our city partners, let's say, for example, if you put money into rehab, how much of that money has been committed? How much money has been out the door, what were the different uses? It's really similar to how we engage with Katie and Tina with your CDVG money, like kind of that regular communication is what we would be offering. And it's not funded, we're making this up as we go, but there's not, it's new, it's all new, and we're just trying to figure out a way to continue to work together in the ways that we've been working together since nineteen eighty-four with CDVG money and other funding sources. So kind of thinking through that, we think it'd be helpful to get a formal approval from the cities in form of a resolution. Our county, our CDA attorney has started to work on like a joint powers agreement or that legal entity. We have to come back to our board too and kind of talk more about like those policies and make sure we're on board as well with that joint, joint agreement. Agree on a start date, like I mentioned, that money's coming in July and the second tranche is coming in December. And it's coming every year, two times a year, till that legislation's changed ever. So we want to make sure that we kind of figure this out in a timely manner. What we are, Maggie and I have been talking out loud, very broadly, is it would be great if we could have, figure it all, there's a lot of nitty-gritty, right? There's a lot of details to figure out, but figure that all out, agreements, everyone, things are signed, and we start January to be able to start implementing the programs.
And just a couple of observations, the statute is still a little opaque. There is a FAQ that Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, the agency requires is responsible for making sure the dollars are spent on the target. There are open questions, for example, the Ballin Wells, I asked them, they're quiet on this right now, but if somebody sells their house and they pay that back, we believe it should stay within the community of where it's being deployed. And I think conversations with the state, if they're modifying something, encourage that, make it look like the programs that we already administered versus program income going to the state. And so there's a lot of nuances here, but I do think, look, you want to make sure, we think we have a good cost, a good affordable housing cost in Dakota County and our cities. We really ought not to be, we've missed an opportunity for the money goes back to the state. Really incumbent upon all of us to make sure that we are keeping an eye out on where we can do good things in our community, and that's fundamentally what we want to offer and account for it. We have to be audit-proof, we have to account for these dollars, we have to ensure they're being spent on what they're intended to be spent on.
So a couple of questions that we have for you tonight is, you know, just number one, is the council supportive of partnering with the CDA with these dollars? And if so, you like one of the programs, all three of the programs, we can divide that up as much as we want to. And the dollars, so if we put a chunk of our three eighty-five, three hundred and eighty-five thousand into the housing rehab, those dollars will be used in Lakeville. Just like those dollars are used when we allocate CDVG towards that. So just know, be clear on that, please. But we're here to listen to you, get your feedback, so that staff kind of knows next steps, because one way or the other, we do need to determine how we're going to utilize these funds.
One question I have is just about, is this, about who's entering potentially into this? Are, are you going to every city in the county? Okay, so then that additional one FTE is supportive of if all of the cities in the county agree to pooling? Well, not pooling, because I guess that's not true.
Right, but pretty good, for the CDA, yeah. So we have been invited to eight of the eleven cities. So far, we have gone to five, five, is that fifth one?
This is our fifth one today.
And we, we believe that, so collectively, they're going to get about three point eight million dollars. We think that it'll cost us, we get about one point two million dollars to one point four million dollars to hire one FTE. Tony and I have had bets about even if we'll get that much money from the cities, if you, if you'll interest us to do that. So I don't know what happens if we get one point five, we haven't figured out if there's that, and that's just for the rehab program. It's not for like radon or if people are interested in some gap financing as well. There's our certain projects within the county, that there could be some good right now projects for gap financing. So I don't know if I'm answering your question.
There's, I guess it's part of a series then, so the one FTE is being paid for by the cities that are entering into this agreement. So let's say it's eight, so we'll pay one eighth of that, and that's not funded through the Laha funds, that's, that's coming out of a budget somewhere else, right? No, I think it is.
We, we believe that, we think, Tony and I believe that you can use the Laha dollars to administer these funds. We have gotten guidance from Minnesota Housing that you cannot use them to pay like for Tony's, Tony's time or the overall arching HRA and that indirect, but we are pretty certain you can use it for those, for this program admin.
It's probably pretty clear because it's not replacing an existing program.
And you can't just fund your program without people, right?
But I do think we do, we do have to look at this contextually, what we're bringing on the volume, and there are ebbs and flows in the program. So sometimes some cities are going more programs than that, and I think that's one of the challenges we have to do, you talked about. Is, is, is we need, you know, an annual measurement or do we need to say, look, over five years, this is where it was deployed, and we're not using your dollars other than the administrative board, we're not using your dollars in Apple Valley. I think we have to have some way that the folks feel like these benefits are showing, like you. There's some of those details I think we're still TBD, candidly, we're just trying to get a sense, is there even an appetite for that? You don't want to go into the next level of getting lawyers together to put together JPAs and things like that, if it's like, you know what, Tony, we're going to fully administer it ourselves. I think Burnsville just talked to Dan Gusserson, the council member Gusserson, and he's looking at a program that he's thinking Burnsville would like to administer. Great, that's fine. You know, I think that's where we are, is trying to get a sense, hey, that's something we should pursue. You know, we don't get an answer to that, it's sort of a, yeah, you know what, I'll love on that, I'll be on that.
So did you have more questions? My, I guess my final question for that was, you're, the proposal of the three different options here I think are all appropriate for what Lakeville needs, but are there ones that are, have a higher ROI, require less administrative work than others, and how do you rank those?
Well, I will jump on the gap financing. If you are putting dollars into a tax credit deal or a bond deal, those projects require reporting, that we already collect. And so if you're adding dollars into a nine percent deal or four percent tax exempt bonds, we're already reporting to the IRS and everybody else. And that satisfies a lot. So that's one of the things we said, let's not create another reporting regime. And the single-family rehab, because we've been, this program is thirty years old, you also have the reporting requirements now, which is at the entry, you've done the income verification on them. you've done the income verification on them and we spent the dollar on the target that is in the program. And so that, we feel we can measure that as well.
And I could just add that the gap financing, typically those are deals where they are loans typically, but they are 30 to 50 year loans. Where with the rehab program, we see those turn pretty quickly, probably an average. Do we have an average?
It was between nine to 12 years was our average. But just to be clear that we do put a 30 year mortgage on these properties. And so it's possible that these loans will sit out there longer.
So let's say that, you know, we decide to put money into the loan improvement and the mitigation. And I'm also, I think personally uncomfortable with the construction gap financing. But I don't want to just throw it into a pot and then you approve all the projects. Like I want to have some sort of working relationship where we say, yep, that's a, the city thinks that's a good investment and there's a partnership instead of just kind of writing the check. And I think that's just personally, I'd like to have our own, you know, see the table when it comes to that.
And I think that's, I made this comment once before. So I was in the city of St. Paul for 15 years where we had that single family program with our code enforcement, so our planning and economic development division was together. I don't think, I think this program works really well when the cities are referring and identifying the targets. So that's partly the not advertising, but as you go through some neighborhoods, and it depends on where you are in the county, but there's some neighborhoods we use to send people out, kind of inventory the neighborhood and say, hey, this house needs some help. Instead of just hitting them with a code enforcement stick, maybe somebody needs to sit down with them and say, we have some favorable financing here that will help you fix this up. And so I, I do think there's an element of this that really is important from your, the city sees this more than we do at the CDA, your neighborhoods. And, and that's a way to say, Tony, we've referred five to you guys. What happened to, you know, where are they? In addition to the massive applicants. So we're all, we're open to that as long as we don't create too much administrative income.
But I also need also on the new construction.
Yes, absolutely. That one is easy because that is something that we're actively talking about. If we were to come to you and asking for a TIF district, right? Like we wouldn't be in those, you are the decision maker whether you want to.
So what does, what's like a, let's say if we were going to set targets to council, like, okay, we're not going to set up any of our own thing. We're going to fund this. What's a good mix to say, okay, we want to put all of it into home improvement this year? Because we don't know what new construction looks like? Like what's, what's kind of your recommendation?
That's a fair question because the other part of this is when to draw the money? So you can set this up a variety of ways. We could do it on a reimbursement basis. So somebody comes in, we identify, our rehab advisor sits down with them, we put together the project, you keep the money until we draw it down to that vehicle. And you get the investment income, everything else on that. For us, that's good because I don't want to be accountable for dollars that are sitting on the shelf. There's that model, there's a, there's a trust fund model where we create like a program where dollars can move into some trust that revolves. And once those eligible costs are available, it can revolve into that. Then you've got to measure it back to you and show you guys, here's how much, here's the activity going on in Lakeville Housing Trust Fund. It's too early to tell you specifically. I think at this point, it's something we should pursue and you're entirely to your appetite. If you want to say, you know what, let's add three single family units to the single family rehab program over the next two, three years. Okay. Straight brought into account, what we need to.
A question for our staff. At one point, we talked about a menu of different options. I don't know how many months ago that was.
Similar to this, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And, but how are we planning to implement that with our current staffing model?
We had the preliminary conversation. It was an anticipation of this next conversation.
So not setting up our own programs, but yeah.
Cities that do that, my understanding, cities that do that. So, and I, I think Burnsville's probably a good model. I cannot remember the entity that they utilize, but they have a third party that money goes to the third party and the third party does essentially what the CDA does. We have a strong history, particularly with the home improvement. And the radon mitigation isn't much different than the home improvement. We have a strong history of our CDVG dollars working exactly the way this would, but the spread is a little bit bigger because we can hit more house sales. So I would feel more comfortable as a staff person utilizing the CDA versus trying to find yet another third party to implement and administer all that with yet another entity. Does that make sense?
Which you could.
And if I'm wrong, the CDA staff, tell me. But I think that's helped the model.
And several cities.
If you're shot wrong, cities have so much to do with that. And so that we were not able to help them at that level, but they were feeling that they needed. So they went to another third party to provide that scene. Similar.
So are you guys in both directions? You want to think about other stuff and what, get to kind of do what we want within the program.
I'm the same person. I appreciate this presentation because it's helped me learn a lot more about what you do. I think it looks like a great opportunity to hit the ground running with this stuff and not reinvent the wheel. So I'm, I'm supportive of it generally. I think we, I think we have to decide, you know, kind of a breakdown would be my, my thought as to what goes into the home improvement, the gap financing piece. But you know, your question about control of those dollars, so to speak, I think was helpful. That was the sound concern for me, so.
But I guess my takeaway from this conversation is that the radon could be part of the home improvement loan program. And if we don't have new construction projects at the moment, it's really more of a hundred percent to the first item until we know of a project of the future.
The slide on radons said something like not more than $28,000. Oh, was that how much?
Yeah, sure. We think that we need about $200,000 a year to reasonably impact the radon issues that we have in Dakota County. And so we're just asking for a contribution of the larger hole into this pot for radon that we would use in house, with houses in Lakeville. And so right now, what we're doing with the CDVG funds is we are, people are taking out loans for these and, and that's part of that $35,000. And so we're testing everybody's house now because we're required to test and it's a good thing to do. And so roughly 50 to 60% of those are coming back as, as the blowing through that, that, that standard.
And where is the habitat piece fall under? Because I, I just see, because we had habitat team and talked to Rita Council Mayor's about this last spring, I don't know if Tony were there, but had a really good presentation and learned a ton in that the fact that there are these, I think Lakeville's at 17 properties that are at some capacity available. So I'm wondering where would those fall under? To me, they seem like a really good way, if we're not talking about just improvement, but same family homeownership.
Hey dude, that is a hundred percent available. Laha is a hundred percent available for that.
Right, but where does it fall under?
It's in my catch up, the number three.
Okay, got it.
The gap financing.
Got it, okay.
One of the things that we're trying to do is encourage, well, before the sales tax dollars were there, Habitat came in and they, we know, we know they need that gap financing for the family. We have to sell those at fair market value for HUD. We're going to take sale proceeds and build new family townhomes or senior housing. But we were pushing Habitat to get those gap dollars from Met Council or state, getting those gap dollars from somewhere else. These would be available. So if you found yourself accumulating sales tax dollars, you didn't want to send them back to the sort of housing financing, you could make that choice and tell Habitat, say, listen, if you need that for affordable homeownership, city of Lakeville is willing to make some of those sales tax dollars available.
Yeah, and I did talk to Chris Coleman about that a little bit, but we didn't really know what our numbers were going to be. Or, so this is more of a Lakeville city staff question than is, then do we think about also establishing a land trust or something, that if we want to park some dollars for this? So it doesn't get clawed back. So I'd like, personally, I like to look at it next to like how we can still support the counties, the CDA, but then if some of these other projects from pop up, I'd like to know if purchases are.
So long as the vendor, on that side, what's nice about Habitat is they have the infrastructure to do that affordable homeownership model that they do. And wherever you get, and there's land trusts, there's like, there's greater fraud counts, CDC, there's a lot of folks who are doing the land trust model. What you want to make sure of is that they can account for a long-term affordability issue. Part of what you buy from them is the measurement of the public purpose outcome. And we've chosen not to do land trusts at CDA. They just, there's some shelf life obligations on that that we'd rather not do, which is why we have Habitat doing, you guys go do it, we'll just sell it to you. You go make sure that it's affordable family that's always in there.
And Mayor, Council, with those 17, we're in the position, we own them right now. And so it's a great position for us to be able to be in communication. We'll know when they're vacant. We'll know when, we, when our board is interested and open to wanting to sell those, who would they want to sell them to? So those are, really, I'd be able to identify and kind of plan for those opportunities.
But in theory, we could say, okay, well, whatever money we set aside a year for homeowners, it's going to shift it around.
Yep, yep. I think there's a lot of flexibility with these dollars. It's more on our end of administratively, just making sure we have the money.
Do you anticipate any further definition changes by the legislature next year? Because the last time we had this conversation, it seemed like there's a lot of flexibility, but maybe there won't be next year. And how can we help advocate to keep it the way?
And part of it is, we look, when we look at affordable housing, it's sort of three legs in the stool. It's the unit, the capital stack. It's the rent assistance if it's high barrier folks, because they usually, you know, have a job or they're struggling. Then there's the service component. So the county is interested in making sure that if we're doing housing for high barrier folks, that we need the service dollars as well. We need a caseworker, we need somebody there. So what they did is they opened it, the aperture to allow for staffing of those types of services, not exclusively nonprofit. But that makes it more important to keep all the people who are working in this field accountable and on point and measure the outcomes because it's pretty flexible. And I, my feeling is just like Tim Floyd in the 90s. If you get two, they'll come back and start closing the act.
It sounds like we're all comfortable with getting some formal agreements and talking about moving direction partnerships. It's great. Good, anything else?
Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, items for future discussion, Council.
Nope, I'm just going to get my.
Any community? Tony, you don't leave yet.
No, no, no.
No, I was just going to say something on the way.
Okay, okay.
Between now and our last meeting, he canceled or haven't met, so.
Okay, anything we need to know according to about Manaprog? Anything you wanted to forward here?
The only real update is that we are going to be using the antique fire truck. Mayor has someone lined up to drive it, I think a retired firefighter. I think you have all the candy you need. And it's off there, I double checked with him this morning, so.
Okay.
Once I get more details on like your lineup spot and tie and all those last things, I'll give those. That's a good question.
All right, well, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Your second? I was prepared to say hi.
Hi.
All right. Thank you, everybody.